Good evening, welcome to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectmen Highway and Cemetery Commissioners Meeting for Monday, February 6, 2023. We'll call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, acceptance of minutes.
Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of December 19th, January 23rd, and approve but not release the executive session minutes of, I think that's, uh, January 23rd, 23rd.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none unanimous. Citizens comments, anyone has a topic that's not on the agenda tonight? See, none, we'll move on. Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week I placed in the OneDrive and also under tonight's agenda, you'll see Item 7B is the Codified Completed and Updated Employee Handbook. It's been edited and approved and returned by Mark Terry, Dudley's Labor Council, and incorporates changes that were made through the HR grant that the town received last year. It was reported out to the Board of Selectmen this past December. I am hoping that the Board of Selectmen will vote to approve the updated version of our HR policies, which will provide us with a better roadmap going forward to both being in compliance with the latest legal regulations that govern our staffing plan, and to also give all of our employees, particularly those not represented by a collective bargaining agreement or an employment agreement, a clear understanding of some of their benefits and rights, as well as giving our management team some guidance in running their departments. This handbook also incorporates our Code of Ethics policy that the Board passed several months ago, as well as our telework policy, updated earned time and buyback policies, conflict of interest, et cetera. So that's Item 7B, and that's what I'll be asking for the Board to approve tonight, and I'll roll it out this week if that happens. Following up on our budget memo, our budget planning from my last TA report last week, I placed in the weekly correspondence folder in the OneDrive a copy of the FY24 budget memo that will be one of two memos, and I'm going to silence my phone, Mr. Chairman. The first memo distributed to all department heads requires a 10% decrease in all proposed departmental budgets, that's 10% from this year's level funds. As the Board is aware, I will be recommending that an override question be placed on a ballot on April 25th, 2023, to give the residents the ability to vote on the level of municipal and educational services that the town will be able to provide, beginning in FY24. The first budget memo specifies a February 9th, 2023 deadline for all departments to present their FY24 budget requests with that 10% reduction. The second budget memo that will be presented this week will ask for a proposed budget from the municipal and education sides, and it's predicated on a successful passage of an override. So it's going to be a little bit of a different budget hearing process this year. One will be with a 10% reduction across the Boards, and the other will be predicated on a successful override passing in April, should the Board see fit to place that on the ballot. I'm working on a timeline for our extremely important upcoming budget hearings and meetings for FY24, and we'll have that calendar this week. This will be a very tough couple of months as we work closely to prepare our spending plan for FY24, and I appreciate the Board, NEFA, and the CIC's patience and commitment with the number of meetings that may be required over the next month or so. I will provide my recommendations, but I will also very much require your guidance in determining how to structure and prioritize our spending for next year. The Town of Dudley and Webster have subcontracted with ALSCO Food Check Group to begin food inspections of local food service establishments in the coming weeks. There are 32 businesses in town that still require food inspections, and they should expect to be hearing from our Board of Health to set up those inspections shortly. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, our mid-year progress reviews have begun for many employees, and this gives the department heads the opportunity, as you all know, at the midpoint of the fiscal year, to meet with employees to measure progress towards their previously established goals. That also means that I will also be due for my mid-year progress review. The Board recalls that in the past, Mr. Marcy has always spearheaded that effort with the Board, and I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to continue that tradition, or if the Board had another idea to set up and do my mid-year progress review? Not to put anybody on the spot.
Would anyone like to volunteer before Mr. Marcy, Volantold?
Yeah, I don't mind doing it.
You ready? All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chairman? I can answer for the Board.
No. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we accept the Town Administrator's report.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just the Town Administration, I'll need a little help with the next couple. First public hearing, fiscal year 2022-2023, Town of Dudley Community Development Block Grant. We're going to start this public hearing at 6:40.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ian McElway is here from CMRPC. He's been facilitating, helping us with this CDVG project. I reported out to the Board at our last meeting about the home improvement aspects of this project, and this is also involving some money for First Ave Infrastructure. So as part of this grant process, Ian came in and we're going to facilitate a public hearing, should the public be interested in knowing what's coming up and have any questions about it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Town Administrator, thank you, Board. Welcome, everyone. My name is Ian McElway with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. We are one of the 13 RPAs, regional planning agencies in the state that cover, and we cover southern and central Massachusetts. Just for the folks here in the audience, I'm passing around a sign-in sheet as well as some materials, although I did not expect to have as many people here, so I did print off as many materials as we needed. But the sign-in sheet is mostly just for the application process to show that people did attend the hearing here. So, thank you, everyone, for today here to discuss the Town of Dudley's next Community Development Block Grant application. This one covers FY22 and FY23 as the state looks to get back on track with the annual allocation of funds. What we have done in the past is we've been talking with the town's ad hoc CDVG Advisory Committee on and off regularly over the last few months to sort of hone in on the projects that the town might want to look to apply for here for this year's application that is due March 3rd. And one of the, so we've come up with three projects, and that I'll go into more detail. The Town Beach ADA Design, the Marino Village and Jericho Neighborhood Property Assessment and Infrastructure Survey, as then the First Avenue Construction Project Phase Two. So, the first one, the ADA plant, the ADA design for the Jericho, for the Town Beach, this has sort of come up in the town's community development strategy that was developed in 2019, as well as some ongoing discussions with the town staff, and it is something that we are looking into as CMRPC is also completing your town's open space and recreation plan. So this would be for the design phase, we would only do design, not construction, to look at ways in order to better allow those with mobility, mobility impairments or some disabilities to access the beach, access the restroom and changing room that's on the site, as well as get down to the water through sort of a series of ramps and switchbacks. We are working with the Michael Radner Associates in Architecture, Landscape Design Firm, to sort of show, to put together a cost estimate and scope of what this design would look like. What we are anticipating is that there will be some improvements to a sidewalk on site, the ramp that, a ramp that can be installed that allows people to get down to the water within a wheelchair, as well as maybe some accessible parking on site that would be accessed from the Lake Avenue. We, and that is, so that is the first project. This project can only look at the removal of architectural barriers to accessibility, but we can also look at incorporating a larger design if, to see how it works out that could be implemented through some other means. So we would look at doing this during this grant year, and then next year applying for construction funds to install all of these improvements that are being done through the design phase. The second project is the Jericho Neighborhood and Marino Village Neighborhood Assessment. So this project has come out of the infrastructure study that was completed as part of the, as your town's FY19 grant. So this would be looking at, we would take, we have a set neighborhood boundary, so roughly the area around Stevens Mill, and then the area of the Jericho Neighborhood that, we're looking at approximately Green Street over to Oxford Avenue, from the town line of the town of the Webster-Dudley line up to where sort of the house is thin out. And what would be entailed for this project is we would have a group of people go, take a photo of each property, take a photo of the streets and their conditions, and then enter everything into a database, score properties based on their level of appearance and sort of how much, how, what it looks like the need is for improvements there. And then, once we go through sort of this process of the database and look at some numbers, we can create a district for the, for the town that would then allow for, in the future, easy, open up to more funding opportunities through the CDVG program to do housing improvements, road improvements, substructure improvements, because we do have the information from the infrastructure plan that was completed by Time Bond. So, so that is going to be the second project, that is going to be a design, or that's going to be a planning project only. And then the third project that we're looking to do is the First Avenue Construction Project Phase Two. So through the FY21 grant, you have received funds to do the design and sort of, and substructure improvements along First Avenue, but the, but the rise in cost of construction materials and the limited budget meant that they weren't, you know, you're not going to be able to do the full reclamation milling of paving of First Avenue during that phase. So we're applying for funds to, to, you know, fully pave up the, the road to get new paving along the street. So what will happen in the first part is, once the substructure is done, it'll be patched, and then we will come along if these funds are, if you're successful in gaining these funds, to go through and do the full milling, so there is a nice, you know, brand-new, smooth street along First Avenue. So that is going to be a construction project only. So we're looking at, along with some administration funds, or grant administration funds through, that you provide to CMRPC, about $340,000. Now, this is reasonable, and it, you, this year you have up to $1.35 million to apply for, so there's plenty of room in there as we work to sort of finalize the numbers in the coming weeks. So all these numbers that you have, that I provided you through the budget table, these are all very preliminary. We're working with Weston and Sampson to get a final scope for the neighborhood assessment. We're working with Time Bond to get a final scope for what the construction work will do, or costs, and then the Radner Associates, we are working to get sort of that scope and that final cost. So what we are looking to now is, to answer any questions you have about these, about these proposed projects, and then hear from anybody in the audience. Once that's done, if you want to vote to approve the projects, or maybe add or take out a project from the proposed list, what we will do then for next steps is, in the next coming weeks, develop the narrative, finalize the budgets. We are working on some data collection right now that'll go into the application, and put everything together for the March 3rd deadline. And I know in the past you've worked with my colleague, Andrew Lowe, on this. He will still be spearheading this program, but I'm, this year I have been asked to lead the application process for, for this applicant, for this project. So with that aside, I open up to any questions that the Board might have about CDVG.
The Board, any questions for Ian?
Just a comment, these are continuations of a, of a project and some new ones that I think that we've been looking at for a while, so. I, I support us doing this, but I always ask, you know, publicly, you know, anytime we apply for grant money, what kind of strings are attached?
Yep, there, so there's no match required. All the money will come straight from the Department of Housing Community Development, and the only string attached to this CDVG application that you've done in the past is that a memo will be signed by the Chair to say that we will develop, we will write up the application and submit it on the town's behalf, and then the funds are awarded to the town, that you would then hire CMRPC to do grant management. This is the same that you've done for FY19, 20, and 21.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience have a question? All right, quiet crowd tonight.
I know. I wasn't expecting so many people.
Yeah, we're all here for you.
Be more questions if there are. Okay, no questions, so thank you very much. Any last remarks?
So, the only thing I recommend is, there's a draft language that, just to, for the Board to vote to accept the projects that we are going to be applying for, so that we can move forward with developing the final application. And then at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, you will, once we have the final numbers, there'll be a cover page for the application that we'll just need you to sign.
All right, I'll close the hearing at 6:50. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, reading from the plan here, the proposed motion, I move that we support and approve the submission of an FY22-23 CDVG application, including the activity as presented today, with allowance for minor budget or program adjustments, and two, to authorize the Chair of the Select Board, that's you, to sign all documents required for the application. That's right?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous.
All right, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next public hearing, change of category, Amshiv Corp., otherwise known as Patriot Gas, 251 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. Change of category from Section 15 Wine and Malt License to Section 15 All Alcohol Liquor License, open hearing, open hearing at 6:51.
Mr. Chairman, this is, before the Speaker begins, this is the fruit of the town meeting's vote to request special legislation to add several malt liquor licenses. This would be an all alcohol license for Patriot Gas, that's one of the several licenses we recently finally got through, and so that's where we're going to make it.
Good evening, my name is Attorney John Meridian, Demarcus Law Offices. With me is Govin Patel and Krishna Patel, who are the co-owners of Patriot Gas, Amshiv Corporation. And as just mentioned, we're applying for a change in manager to upgrade the beer and wine package store license to a full alcohol license. This process was a special legislation, which started pretty close to two years ago, and it was finally signed off by the Governor in December. So we're asking for approval, a change of category to, to full alcohol, full liquor. Upon issuance of the license, Govin and Krishna will surrender their beer and wine license back to the, the town as required. So if there are any questions you may have for me or the applicants, we'll welcome those.
Any questions? Mr. Marcy?
Just that question and a comment, just all the paperwork on our end is all set, Michelle?
We've had a long time to get that squared away.
Just for the record publicly, and also, you know, another small business, you know, that's been trying to push this for two years, so I'm really happy to see this finally going through for you guys, so I support this.
All right, I'll close. Any questions from the audience? Yes, thank you. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at 6:53. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the change of category for Amshiv Corp., does business as Patriot Gas, 251 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass., from a Section 15 Wine and Malt License to a Section 15 All Liquor, Alcohol Liquor License.
Second.
A motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous.
Thank you, have a good night.
No glasses, no.
You don't need them.
They're on my head.
I know, but I had to borrow those. All right, we make a subtle change to the, the agenda. Rich Kamanyani? All right, I think we're doing, so 6D, we'll start with Rich.
Please, thank you.
Worcester Regional Retirement Cola?
Yep. So, good evening. The Town of Dudley is part of the Worcester Regional Retirement System. The Worcester Regional Retirement Board has voted to put forth the option of an additional 2% cost of living. Historically, the Board goes through, Worcester Regional Retirement Board votes the 3%. It is 3% on the first $16,000 of a pension, so a retiree or benefited widow, widower would receive that. The optional 2% is contingent. Two-thirds of the cities or towns need to ratify that vote to make it effective. Michael Sacco, CEO of the Worcester Regional Retirement Board, has put forth this option for your consideration. Mr. Chairman, how, how deep do you want to go into? It is a one-time 2%. It is in perpetuity. So what would have normally been 3% on the first $16,000 or 480, an additional 2% on the $16,320, 800. It's expected to mirror, I think it's Social Security's change, there was an increased benefit allowance.
Any questions for Rich?
If, if I may make that one statement, just for my own edification, it is a two-thirds vote of the members of the Worcester Regional Retirement System, the cities and towns. So if the Board votes in favor, but end up in the grand scheme of things being in the minority, less than one-third percent, it may not go through. So you're taking a vote in addition to the other two-thirds. So we have a two, two-thirds of the select boards binding the remainder, in essence is what it is.
Worcester County, excuse me.
Worcester Regional Retirement System, 91 members.
Okay, got it. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I think we owe it to our retirees to, to adopt this, so I vote, I move that we ratify the vote, Worcester Regional Retirement Board, to provide the cola to the retirees as written.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous.
Excellent, thank you.
Should we go to F?
Of course. So earlier this evening, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee reaffirmed the $105,000 for the Partridge Hill Road Betterment. It was the one item not memorialized in the September joint meeting between the CIP, FAA, and the Board of Selectmen. Error of omission, whatever you'd like to call it. So this evening, the CIP put it on the plan, the plan has been updated, the Board of Selectmen, at your pleasure, would accept the updated plan, and again, this is for compliance sake.
Okay. Just one caveat, I obviously had to run the capital improvement meeting right before this, and voted on it as a capital improvement member, which I'm a card-carrying member, and so I'll be also voting in this meeting for this, right? What's the Board's pleasure?
This is for the, the Capital Improvement Plan?
Yes.
Rich and Jonathan?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the updated Capital Improvement Plan for compliance reasons, as described by the Treasurer, and yourself.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
And the next item, G, Bund Council Compliance. So, the Board of Selectmen, you're being asked to make a motion that covers two things, that the update to the road was required by public convenience and necessity, meaning it's a public way, but we can't get an ambulance down to the end, whatever the Board of Selectmen consider under those, that phrase, public convenience and necessity, but also that the road was accessible to the public. but also that the road was accessible to the public for a minimum of two years prior to any of the updates being done. It's a conditional borrowing.
Which is in fact the case, Mr. Chairman, it's been accessible for two years, this is, like Rich is saying, it's a compliance issue, we have to.
It's a memorialization under which you're borrowing and.
What's the board's pleasure? Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, before with the repairs, what are we looking here?
Motion that the repairs to be.
Repairs to be made with the proceeds of the one hundred and five thousand dollar road betterment bonds are required by public convenience and necessity, and B, the private roads slash ways to be improved by the repairs to be made with the proceeds of such bonds have been made to the public for a minimum of two years.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, much appreciated, we've got a few quick votes, but we've moved quite a few things forward. Also appreciate everybody's patience this evening, I know it's a big night, for moving things up to the front. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks, Rich. All right, new business, line M A, full-time appointment to Police Sergeant Keith Remillard. Town clerk is here.
Okay, so following this discussion, it's the board's pleasure, proceed with her swearing in.
One by one?
One by one.
One by one.
Good evening. Last Board of Selectmen meeting, I got the approval from the board to put a fourth sergeant position on. As I mentioned in that prior meeting, this has been discussed for months, weeks, with the retired chief, Steve Weiner, how important it is to have a supervisor on every shift, especially with the changes in the Reform Act. There's been a lot of responsibility placed on the officers that should not be placed on the officers, it should be placed on the supervisor, a sergeant. And I thank the board for giving me the approval to promote a fourth sergeant. And at this point, I would recommend Officer Keith Remillard to that position. He was hired as a reserve in two thousand and eleven, he was promoted to full-time in two thousand and fifteen. He's a member of the Southern Worcester County Crime and Drug Task Force for almost six years. He grew up in Dudley, volunteers in Dudley, and he's currently enrolled in Anna Maria, he has an associate's degree, and he's working on his bachelor's degree. So based on that, I would recommend that the board appoint him to a full-time sergeant position.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Marcy?
Keith, you would like to talk to us a little bit about what it'll be like to be a sergeant, and what's your vision for being a sergeant when you step up to the next level?
Yeah, sure, first of all, thank you guys for having me here and giving me the opportunity. I've worked with Chief Karlowitz, Chief Weiner, the other sergeants that we've had over the last year or so. Going to leadership trainings and just trying to do as best as I can. Trying to take more of a leadership role in the department, so having the opportunity to step into this new role and kind of help move the department forward is something that I look forward to.
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just point out, as we go through these appointments, there was some additional documentation that the board requested from the chief, and those were provided over the, and I know that Mr. Sullivan, who's not here tonight, also asked for some additional documentation. That's all been provided in the OneDrive, I'm sure you've all seen it, but I just want to publicly acknowledge that that documentation was provided.
Thank you. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, as per the recommendation of the police chief, I would like to make a motion that we promote Keith Remillard to the full-time appointment of sergeant at Dudley Police Force.
We'll get a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous, congratulations. Sir?
Congratulations.
Plus. I don't want to be in the way.
Do you feel like?
No, you're fine on this side of it.
Do you want them up now?
Yeah.
There we go.
One more, please. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Awesome, what's up?
Thank you.
Does anyone want to?
Town clerk?
Swear them in, please.
Can you raise your hand? Do you, Keith Remillard, solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform your duties as sergeant of the Dudley Police Department?
I do.
As police sergeant, will you represent the town of Dudley in a professional manner, provide leadership to the department, and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States, as well as the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Chief Karlowitz?
Hey, also, last meeting, I asked the board to declare a vacancy for the acting lieutenant position. As you know, when I got promoted, that position was left vacant. I got the approval from the board to recommend somebody for that position. So again, that position, this position is an acting lieutenant position. There is a stipulation in my contract that allows me, for some reason, if I chose to step down, to go back to lieutenant position, hopefully that doesn't happen, but that's why it's an acting position. Based on everything, I would recommend Sergeant Anis for this promotion. He was hired as a reserve in nineteen ninety-five, he was promoted to full-time in two thousand and two, promoted to sergeant a little over a year ago. He was a detective for our department for almost two years, he was a school resource officer for over five years. He has a master's degree from Nichols College in counterterrorism, and he grew up in the Webster Dudley area, and I think he's going to be a great asset to the department in the administration role. So based on that, I recommend Sergeant James Anis for the acting lieutenant position.
Mr. Marcy?
Jimmy, I'll ask you the same question I asked Keith, you know, now you've already been a sergeant for a year, now you're going to want up to the next level, what's your vision for being our lieutenant?
I look forward to working with Chief Karlowitz and moving the department in forward progression.
I think the best part of it is covering for chief, he's on vacation on Monday night. Those usually cut and run on ten P M., but that's fine. It's the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman? I move that we appoint Lieutenant Sergeant James Anis to be our acting police lieutenant.
Second.
At the recommendation of the police chief.
Motion is second, any discussion?
I tried to give you a little dramatic pause there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous, congratulations. Congratulations.
A little, okay, that's good, great, thank you. One more, please, thank you.
Town clerk?
Town clerk?
Is town clerk going to all square in?
Do you, James Anis, solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform your duties as lieutenant of the Dudley Police Department?
I do.
As police lieutenant, will you represent the town of Dudley in a professional manner, provide leadership to the department, and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States, as well as the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so help you God? Congratulations.
Chief, acting appointment to Police Sergeant Chandler Boyd.
And again, going back to the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I asked the board for approval to appoint an acting sergeant position, since more than likely, one of the sergeants was going to become the lieutenant, that was going to open up the sergeant position. Again, this position's an acting position, only because, again, the domino effect, if I move down, the lieutenant moves down, and then the sergeant moves down. Again, I don't anticipate that happening, but we have to do it that way. So based on that, I would recommend Officer Chandler Boyd for the acting sergeant position. He was hired as a reserve in nineteen ninety-eight, promoted to full-time in two thousand and two. He has been the department's firearms licensing officer for almost twenty years. He's been the firearms qualification officer with me for almost ten years. He was a member of the regional SWAT team earlier in his career. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Curry College, and he also grew up in the area. So based on that, I would recommend that Officer Boyd be promoted to acting sergeant, and look for the board's approval.
Mr. Marcy?
Chip, great to see you up here. I'll ask you the same thing I asked Keith and Jim, you know, moving up to the next level of leadership, what would be your vision as a sergeant?
Just like the other candidate said, I'd like to move the department forward, I've got twenty-five years of experience, worked in every shift, and I think I have the abilities to lead the men and the women of the department and be in a supervisor role, and I appreciate that opportunity.
Fantastic. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Officer Chandler Boyd to be acting as police sergeant on the recommendation of the police chief.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none, unanimous. Congratulations. Come on up, Chip.
Chip, congratulations.
Congratulations.
They're going to have to get behind me.
Yeah, I know, huh? This one got tough. A long time since we were.
Don't block the slot.
It's only over here. We're along for the ride.
Okay, yeah. Going to be two? Thank you.
Thank you again, John.
Thank you, Chip.
Chip?
Do you, Chandler Boyd, solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform your duties as sergeant for the Dudley Police Department?
I do.
As police sergeant, will you represent the town Dudley in a professional manner, provide leadership to the department, and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States, as well as the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so help you God?
I do.
I think that's it for the promotions, but I want to thank the board for their support for all this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, just a few comments about tonight, just, I want everybody at home and everybody here to understand, like, how special tonight was. Between Chief Karlowitz's ascension and Keith Chandler and Jim, tonight, you know, that's a lot of promotions within a short period of time, which just proves that the system is working, and these guys worked really hard to get where they are, and we should all be proud of that. And Chief's team is set, he has his team in place, and like the guys all said, I have no doubt that we will move the department forward. So congratulations, guys, and this is a special night indeed, and we have pictures of every, I think it's great, and everybody will love to see those, thanks.
Congratulations, all three of you. Obviously, the expectations are higher, with leadership comes some added nuances to the position, right? I'm sure you're all eager and ready, so thank you.
Could I get them?
Sure.
I think it speaks to the department that there were no outside hires, this was all inside. You've all learned from the people before you, and I mean, just the department as a whole, it's just a great department, why go outside, just, we've got good people, just move them up, that's it.
Hey, congratulations to all of you, like the chief said, this should do it for quite some time, hopefully. And I hope that you're all happy, I have no doubt that you're all going to succeed in your primary duty, which is to keep us all safe and your families, thank you.
Well said, man. Thank you to town clerk, Laurie Smith, for swearing them in. All right, next item on the agenda. Keep in track at home, it's E, Rampco Construction Amendment to Existing Film Management Plan, board votes to, oh, that's the motion. Have it from Rampco? Anyone here from Rampco?
Mr. Chair, this was an amendment to essentially codify a change in the state regulation for soil, and maybe if the chair wouldn't mind, we could leave this till the end to see if somebody shows up to speak on it, we had multiple conversations.
Yeah.
And they indicated they would be here, so I'm surprised that something may have happened, but.
Yeah, let's give them a little bit more time, I'd rather have them here to have the discussion, so we can.
Yeah, please.
All right, so let's go to, where am I?
H.
H, Conservation Commission, request to dedicate the Causeway and Hayden Pond Road in memory of Nancy Vajovic. Someone here?
Hi, my name is Paul Wheelock, and I'm president of Dudley Conservation Land Trust. This is Kristen Bates, one of our board members. We've been working in collaboration with the Dudley Conservation Commission and the Hayden Pond Association, and we'd like to do some sort of memorial to Nancy Vajovic. Nancy worked tirelessly for the land trust for land protection issues. She worked many years on the Conservation Commission for water quality issues, and she was a past president of the Hayden Pond Association, she lived there for many years, and her parents before her lived there for many years before that. So we'd like to, she was also on the Finance Committee in town, worked tirelessly, you know, I could go on and on. So what we'd like to do is dedicate the Causeway on Hayden Pond Road in memory of Nancy Vajovic, and what we'd like to do is just put up a sign similar to the ones that are around town, like the one for Norma Cash Smith or Nittmunk Square, something similar to that, and also maybe do a bronze plaque somewhere over there, mounted to a stone, and do a dedication sometime in the spring, when the weather gets a little nicer. So we're asking the Board of Selectmen to allow us to do all that.
Mr. Marcy?
Good to see you, Paul.
I do, John.
It's good to see you, I saw this on the agenda, and I thought it was such a great thing. Also on the Dudley Women's Club for many years, I wanted to point that out.
Yes.
And just the place to put that.
And just the place to put that on Hayden Pond Road and the Causeway, because when you drive over it, you look right at our house. So I think that is such a fitting memorial, right?
Well, that's what... That's Plan A. If you say no, I don't know if there's a Plan B.
I'm gonna make motion right now that we approve the request to dedicate that Causeway in memory of Nancy Vukovic.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Fourth. Sully would fifth it. Sully would... Sully would have more to say, I'm sure. Any discussion?
Maybe down the road, Mr. Chairman, we could get an idea from Mr. Wheelock with the overall plan it's going to be and when the dedication will take place before...
Absolutely. We're just in the beginning stages. We're just trying to get permission now to do this. You know, like, and we will probably, when we have a dedication, you know, we'll have to probably ask the chief if we could probably close the road there for an hour or whatever. So, we'll come back to the Board and let us know what our firing plans are.
All right, separate discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Anything else you'd like to say from the Women's Club?
There is a little something I'd like to add, if I may, which is very brief.
Out of feeling.
Thank you. I would just like to mention that memorial squares we have in town, all the veterans' memorial squares. For the Dudley Women's Club, Nancy Vukovic headed up the program that every year we clean those squares, the Highway Department mulches, but every year the Dudley Women's Club buys flowers and plants them, waters them all summer long, weeds the squares, and she headed... She was very passionate about it, so...
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very much. Thanks for doing that.
Wonderful. All right, next item. We have to amend the purpose of Regulatory Compliance Revolving Fund to include reimbursement contribution or shared costs with other entities for environmental testing, regulatory and/or compliance.
Mr. Chairman, this is a revolving fund that the Board approved maybe a year or so ago, and it allows us to collect money from land lease agreements and put it in, put it into a revolving fund so we can play, we can pay for testing, compliance, and that sort of thing. I'm asking the Board tonight to amend this to include reimbursement contribution or shared costs with other entities for environmental testing, regulatory, and/or compliance, which will give us the ability to work with other entities, other private entities, to be reimbursed for expenses that other entity or entities may be responsible for, and we will in turn use those funds to pay it forward for compliance and testing. So this is just a... The Board has to assign a reason to a revolving fund, and I'm asking the Board to add this reason to it. Money in the form of reimbursement for regulatory issues, money out for the same thing.
It's the Board's pleasure. Mr. Marcy.
It makes sense, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like to move that we amend the purpose of Regulatory Compliance Revolving Fund as written.
I second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, next, thinking to old business. Earth Day is the Board of Health here?
Mr. Chairman, I got a response on the, one of the items that we delayed. We're looking with Joe Lombardo. Is he here tonight? There you go.
Rampco, okay. So let's go back. Rampco Construction, an amendment to an existing fill management plan. Why don't you come up to the microphone, tell us who you are and what you need?
Hi, my name is Joe Lombardo. I'm actually with consultant with McPhail Associates, who is the LSP who consults to Rampco and French on the Dudley facility.
So what's, what are you asking for tonight? Does it just answer questions, or is it...
Yeah, I just came to answer questions. I can try to sum up what they discuss.
Yeah, could you?
I was under the assumption that they would be here, but the request is to have the ability to accept what is considered remediation waste at the facility. Based on current regulations, certain sites have MCP releases on them. Dudley facility has certain, as I'm sure you're aware, criteria for acceptance of soils at that facility, and the proposal does not involve amending those regulations or criteria at all, as the constituents for the acceptance would remain exactly the same. The difference is that they would have the ability to accept what's considered remediation waste soil from another site that is considered an MCP release site. An example would be concentrations of soils at a non-MCP site of lead. If it's still considered a non-release site, Dudley can accept it. If it's associated with an MCP release site, under the current fill management plan and ACO, the DEP, Dudley can accept that soil. This change would allow that same soil with those same exact concentrations coming from an MCP site to be used at the Dudley facility site, particularly in what's called the less-than-RCS2 area of that facility.
Question?
Could I ask that instead of you using abbreviations that you, like MCP?
Sorry. MCP is the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. It's the regulations which govern contamination, soil, groundwater, air, vapor intrusion.
I thought it was some kind of chemical. That's why I never asked.
Sorry, too many abbreviations in my world.
What's your recommendations, Town Administrator?
Well, from my, my conversations with Mr. Andrew Levitch from Rampco, this is no change in an already permitted use. It's just a change in the regulation, the state regulation, that at one point, for example, topsoil was brought, was considered not suitable, but now it is suitable because as long as it meets that certain regulation that we've already approved and accepted, topsoil can now be brought into that facility. That's the way it was explained to me.
So I think the question on hand is, are we accepting any greater risk to the town?
No. No, chemical constituents of the soil are not changing, so there's no increased level of risk at all. It doesn't change the acceptance criteria at all.
That's definitive. Thank you.
Yes.
Obviously, you know, PFAS and other contaminants, we don't want to increase our risk of any of those.
Agreed, and nothing is changing in that regard, or other compounds.
Okay. Mr. Signavich?
So what was allowed to be brought there three years ago is the same that's going to be allowed to be brought there now? Nothing's changed. The only thing that's changed is what the state something.
Correct. Chemically speaking, that is correct. It's... Trying to see if I can think of a good example to... If we have a site that's looking to bring soil to Dudley, and right now, let's say that the test results show that there's lead in that soil at what we call 250 milligrams per kilogram. Based on Dudley's acceptance criteria, if that particular soil is from a site that the state would consider is not a mass contingency plan DEP release site, it's not remediation waste, Dudley would be able to accept that soil in the less-than-RCS2 area of the land, of the fill management site. If that same exact soil is from an MCP release site and it's associated with the release, per the regulations with DEP, it would be considered remediation waste. Under the current approvals in fill management for Dudley, they could not accept that material. This change would allow them to accept that same soil if it's considered remediation waste, being chemically identical.
The one?
Yes.
What's the difference between us voting yes or no on this? Meaning we say no. What's the difference? What type of thing are we saying no to? What, if we say no, what is then declined? Sorry, didn't mean to swing at you there.
It would limit the... Approving this would allow for acceptance of additional soil from more sites. So it would limit the amount of soil that could be brought in.
Could I ask what's in this soil? I just, I don't know. And before I say yes to something, I want to know what I'm saying yes to. It's like buying a car. I read the fine print.
Sure.
Just want to know.
It could be anything. Anything from natural excavated soil, from construction projects across the state, some in Connecticut, natural soils, some of it is fill soils with background levels of certain constituents, metals, petroleum-related hydrocarbons. You know, again, it's like criteria at Dudley, they have two portions of the facility, the less-than-RCS1, the less-than-RCS2, and there's a list of acceptance criteria that the soil acceptance is based upon. And this would not, this approval request would not change that set of criteria.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, it's, I don't... Based on all the information I've received, which is about as much as you've received, there is no change in the criteria that the town already, it's already voted to approve. We're not accepting different, with different things. We're not doing anything differently than what we've previously approved.
I guess that's why it's confusing that we have to vote on anything at all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's my exact point. I, I, I still don't 100% understand this. I have difficulty saying yes to something that I completely don't understand, especially with PFAS and everything else. I don't... I don't understand why we have to...
I understand.
If nothing's changing, I don't understand why we'd have to vote. I, I, if the regulations change, that should just switch right over.
Mr. Marcy.
Did I understand it correctly, Mr. Chairman, that it's basically giving them the opportunity to allow soil that's brought in from different sites that are chemically the same as the stuff we usually take, but it's, it, the site it comes from is just designated a different way?
That is correct.
Okay, and we're not letting in, and the acceptance criteria won't allow us to take bad stuff anyways, correct?
That's correct, and if this change were approved, it wouldn't increase the amount of contamination that's coming into the site. It would be the same, chemically speaking, as what's accepted now.
I get it.
It just opens up, one way to look at it is, it opens up more opportunities for reuse of this generally clean soil from a larger number of sites.
Which?
Same stuff, more sites.
Same stuff, more sites.
But I still don't grasp why we have to vote on it if it's the same stuff.
Because they're limited to the number of places they can receive it?
Correct, and it would, and it would require an amendment to the existing fill management plan that Dudley has with the MAS DEP.
I don't want to change that. That one's... Right. Wait, where does this go? We don't want, we don't want, oh, I thought you said change their criteria. We don't want to...
No, 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 no. It just, there's, as written now, the fill management plan for Dudley with the DEP does not allow for this remediation waste, something that's considered remediation waste from an MCP release site that come to Dudley. This change, this would change that, and that would have to be reflected in an amendment to the existing fill management plan.
Another question, Mr. Chairman?
So does DEP have to ratify our vote like they have to accept it, or is it like...
Correct. They would, they would, this would have to then go to DEP to get their approval.
Okay. All right, I get it now. Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve the amendment as, as written.
Is there a second to move to a vote?
Second.
Discussion. So if I summarize this, private land...
Private land, good point.
Private land, accepted use currently. It's the same use just from different sites.
Correct.
I think we're just, thank you for educating us, because I don't, I don't remember this coming up in the previous four and a half years.
Yeah, it was a good discussion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hell.
Three, one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Without additional risk. All right, where am I? The best for last, almost. Employee Handbook Update. Town Administrator, take it away.
Did we do Earth Day already, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, no, we got, I got sidetracked because we're in Rampco.
I don't mind speaking on behalf of this, Mr. Chairman.
What number is that? Oh, yeah.
Seven A.
Okay, seven A. Take it away, seven A and then seven B. How's that?
The Board of Health has worked with our Highway Superintendent to do our traditional annual Earth Day. Get that back on track. We have a small budget for that. I believe that Jeff is going to provide the dumpster use for that, and we'll do the general, the Board of Health will do their general announcement about the people who want to participate in Earth Day, volunteers, clean up the side of the road for one day and bring it down to the Highway Department. They're requesting permission to hold it on 4/22 from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Any other questions for the Town Administrator? Mr. Marcy?
No, I think it's great. We do this every year, thanks to the Board of Health and the Highway Department and all the volunteers that will do that. So I move that we grant permission for the Board of Health to hold Earth Day 2023 on April 22nd, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Highway Department.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jeff?
I just wanted to add to that Pratt, Pratt Trucking makes a donation of the container and the disposal for the, for the container for that day, so...
Costs are mitigated, in other words. I'll be, oh, discussion, go ahead.
I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Is this something that we send a thank you letter to Pratt, Mr. Chairman, for providing that?
We certainly could, and we'll have an opportunity to thank them in person. I'll do that on behalf of the Board if you like.
That's fantastic.
It's part of the contract that the Board negotiated with...
Oh, okay. Well, then thank them for ours. That's good.
All right, we've got a, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Three, nothing. Employee Handbook Update. Mr. Town Administrator?
Following on my Town Administrator's report, Mr. Chairman, the Board recalls we've been working on updating our handbook with the Labor Council and through the grant review that we, that was conducted by the Collins Center, UMass Collins Center. We've done that. We've sent it to the Labor Council to make some edits and adjustments that he's a lot more familiar with the town of Dudley than our consultants are, and for good reason. He's been at Labor Council for probably close to 20 years, so he's made some adjustments to that for, into something that makes more sense for Dudley. He's codified all of our previous rules, make sure there's no inconsistencies or incompatibilities from our previous versions of our handbook, and I think it's a good piece of work. It's been, it's been in the, in the wind drive for the Board to inspect. If you'd like to vote on, to approve it tonight, that's fine. If you'd like more time to look at it, that'd be fine, too.
It's the Board's pleasure. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the updates that the town administrator presented to the employee handbook.
Second.
Discussion?
That's the updated version that went through council, right? Correct. Okay.
You want me to add that to my motion?
Yeah.
I will do that.
I'll, yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Right on the ball. Any other discussion?
Always.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Student rep, Vanessa?
Usually I bring to you good news about what's going on at Shepherd Hill, but currently there are a lot of students worried about, um, the budget cut. There's not a lot of communication between teachers and students as to what is going on with the budget cut, and if the budget increase does not happen, there are a lot of extra curriculars in clubs and sports that will be disbanded because of this, and around thirty-two teaching positions will be lost in, in the district, eight being from Shepherd Hill. Um, this will heavily affect, obviously, juniors, um, sophomores and freshmen, and obviously the middle schools and all the other schools within the district. I plan on speaking at the school committee meeting, um, to advocate for the budget increase. My question for you tonight is, what part does the Board of Selectmen have in the process of the budget, budget increase, if you do have one?
Mr. Town Administrator, could you, uh, say it this, uh, the best way possible?
We work very closely with the schools. I think part of the reason you haven't received a lot of feedback is we haven't come up with the final plan yet. Um, we get an annual assessment from, based on a chapter seventy formula, which is very complicated.
From the state?
The state, the state, our, our district agreement predicates what the assessment is going to be from year to year. We try to meet that number the best we can based on our, you know, taxes and the revenues that we collect, and that's where our budget process starts. Um, where it ends up is what we can reasonably provide for the, on the school assessment side, and still keep the officers in the fire department, and the Board of Health, and the town clerk, and the, um, Highway Department, and Michelle, and everyone else that works in the building, working for the, for the public. So it's an ongoing annual thing, and, and, and it's, we look at it as another piece of the overall budget for the town, and we do our, do the best we can to come up with a plan that's going to work. We're not quite there yet, but when we're there, I can tell you that, and, and you can bring the message to whomever you want to bring it to, that you're going to hear a lot about it, and it's going to be publicized, and what the implication will actually mean will not be a secret to anyone. It won't be a secret what the implication will mean for town services, and it won't be a secret for your peers in school. They'll, they'll know what it's going to mean to them, plan A or plan B. We anticipate a vote on April twenty-fifth. If the Board of Selectmen approves, sending it to the ballot and letting the, the residents decide as to what level of services they want, education and municipal. But you're going to hear a lot about it real soon. It's not, believe me, the last thing we want to do is be quiet about it.
It was a two-hour-ish meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Should be on the YouTube channel, Town YouTube channel, where they have the discussion, try to explain chapter seventy, uh, and there's not a lot the town can do, the school district can do to get more state money. It seems like the calculation for us is mostly driven by number of students, which we know is declining.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent in the last ten years or twenty years.
Thousand eight.
Yeah, since two thousand eight. So, um, definitely watch that video.
Okay, thank you.
Elsa?
Yes.
Departmental communication. Let's go left or right. Can I, Jeff?
So first of all, um, last week we had the bid opening for the Brandon Road Bridge demolition project. There was a, uh, successful low bidder will be developing a contract. Uh, the, uh, bid price was a hu... one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred, five hundred dollars. So we'll be, we'll be working towards, uh, getting that project underway, signing a contract with them, and hopefully, uh, underway by April first with the demolition of the bridge. Also, over the weekend, uh, we had a couple of, uh, had an issue with a couple of frozen pipes. Uh, we had a broken heating pipe in one of the IT closets on the, on the second floor, uh, some flooding in the, uh, in the vaults, in the co... in the collector's office and the town clerk's vault. There was, uh, minimal damage done to, and fortunately, none to any records. I think there were a small, small number of, uh, bills or some paperwork that was damaged in the, uh, in the collector's office, but, uh, heating company came in and made the repairs on, on the heating pipe. We had, also had a sprinkler line that froze in the vestibule of the town hall, and that required draining of the sprinkler system, the repair of the pipe, and a lot of cleaning in the town hall and, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of the areas, so there'll be a cleaning contractor that comes in and, uh, does some remediation work to make sure that we don't have any issues with, uh, moisture or mold. Um, and, uh, fortunately, we continue with, uh, patent of, other than the extreme cold over the weekend failing mild weather with, uh, with respect to the snowfall, so I hope that continues. And that's about it.
Question for Jeff. Jeff, I saw, I had seen something out there about, uh, you know, the pre-treat, the brine. Do you have any, uh, sense of like how that's been going or how it's working so far?
Sure, so, um, we've, uh, our crews have, uh, been able to make brine with the, with new equipment. We do have a setup with a sprayer. Uh, we haven't had great opportunity to, uh, we've, we've done testing with it, but we haven't had great opportunity to, uh, go out and actually use it. There's a, uh, there's actually a flow chart of when, when you want to use that and when you don't want to use it. If the, uh, the pavement surfaces are already wet, it's not a time that you're going to use it. Dilution is the, would be the big problem with that. Uh, the intention is to go out and pre-treat on a dry surface so that you get drying with the, uh, the brine, uh, prior to it freezing on the surface, so, um...
And it makes the li... like white lines on the street.
Pencil, white pencil lines on the road, so...
Okay.
I'm sure you've maybe seen some around town with the, uh, testing that was done and getting everything dialed in as far as the application rates and the, uh, and the mix ratio with the, uh, with the machine, so we've been pretty successful with that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Uh, not really much to report for January. Uh, we had a good month for crime, um, knock on wood. Uh, the only thing I would ask the residents is, uh, we did have a couple of car breaks last weekend. Just make sure you lock your cars, especially if they're in your driveway, or if you're going on the walk, the rail trail. Uh, don't leave any valuables in the, uh, open. Uh, we did have a couple of smashing grabs where somebody just smashed a window and stole a couple wallets. So that's the only thing I would just, uh, ask the residents, be vigilant. Other than that, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Chief, thank you. George?
Hey, good evening. Uh, just to elaborate a little bit about this past weekend, uh, we did see, we see numerous calls for burst pipes in houses. Couple businesses really got soaked. Um, I just want to make it known for the public that it'd be a good idea if you identify in your home where your water meters are located and have, make sure you have access to your water meters, because the shut offs from the street are right there at the meter, and, uh, they're very easy to, to operate. And, and we finally went to a few of these places, nobody even knew where the meters were. They were basically buried in product or whatever, so access to them, uh, became kind of a problem, and by the time we did get to them, uh, the damage has really been done. So, uh, if any people have questions about that, they can always call the Water Department. Another sidebar to that is, uh, commonly pipes burst because of drafts in, in homes, even if well insulated homes, uh, because there's chase ways and things that are not insulated. So, uh, these common types of colds that come, uh, are not always something we endure a lot, but when they do come and there's, and there's severe winds and drafts, uh, it's a good idea to keep your water at a trickle, at least at a stream, running in your home, no matter what, because that'll at least keep the effect of the water moving and, uh, reduce a lot of that, uh, problem of draft coming in and, uh, freezing pipes. Same as people get frozen, uh, with their hands, within a few minutes or whatever it is, same thing with water. Can do with a draft with that kind of cold when you're talking sub-zero temperatures. So it's a good idea to, uh, avoid that problem and keep water going in the home. Identify where your meter is, identify where your shut off is, make inspections of your home throughout the day so that, you know, no surprises when you come home and your cellar's flooding or what have you, or whatever up. Uh, and we're always happy to try to identify for you where your water meter be located, uh, so that you know where your shut offs are, and know how to operate them. That's it.
So over the weekend, to piggy, piggyback on the, uh, with sub-zero temperatures, we opened a warming center on Friday at nine AM and kept it open until Sunday at seven AM. To the best of my knowledge, we didn't have anybody take advantage of it, although we stocked it with water, tea, hot cocoa, coffee, and some snacks. And I came in this morning to find a bunch of winter hats and gloves that were donated. I don't know who donated them, but thank you for that. I will do some further investigation to give a formal thank you to the person that donated them, but I will thank them now, even though we don't know who it is. AFG is due in on Friday. Uh, I should be completed with that by Wednesday. I'm writing it for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to replace our portable radios so we can become P-25 compliant, and we will have tri-band portables that are intrinsically safe, which we currently do not have, and, uh, not all our portables cu... currently meet P-25 or digital capabilities. And with the towns around us going digital, I'm doing everything I can to help defer some of these costs. Uh, we, on a separate note, we have a, uh, meeting with a fiber company on Thursday with the town administrator, myself, and Director Linsky, uh, to see if I can apply for the Mass State Fiber Grant so we can update our voting sites and our repeater sites so we can come into compliance. Lastly, uh, we're in the third week of our fire program up at the high school. Uh, we feel that it's going well. I don't know if you've heard anything about it, but, um, it's a pilot program. We didn't have a lot of time to, uh, lay out a syllabus because they wanted us to start like immediately, so we're kind of going along by the IFST program, which is our entry-level program for new firefighters. Uh, we kind of watered that down a little bit. We're trying to mix PowerPoint in with some practical evolutions. Um, I have the state police dog coming in on Friday for them. Uh, we had the truck up there today and did a little hands-on, so hopefully we continue moving forward in a positive direction with that. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Treasure collector, leave. Ooh, uh, board member comments.
Mr. Chairman, were we supposed to vote on this thing here?
Oh.
Drain cover? I just saw that.
Jeff, uh, you need us to, uh, talk about repairing a drain cover, damage during plowing?
Uh, yes, so, uh, during one of the storm events, um, where we actually performed some plowing this year, uh, there was damage done to a manhole cover or a cover that had previously, previously been damaged, there was more damage done to on Misty Meadow. So, uh, the fact that it's a, a private street, um, seeking the approval of the Board to make the necessary repairs, it looks like the, uh, the frame for the manhole cover will need to be excavated and replaced. So I don't have a, I don't have a firm dollar value on it, but, uh, it will probably cost several hundred dollars.
Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, let the highway superintendent work with the town administrator to, um, look into repairing that drain cover.
Second. Second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for catching on. We're here for you. Uh, board member comments. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to start off to address the water break issue that occurred over the weekend, and thank Jeff, Brian, Lucas, and Michelle for, uh, such a quick and amazing response and using our network that we have here in the town hall to, um, address and fix that situation as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
I'll echo what Mark said, that could have been much worse if it wasn't addressed as quickly as it was. Again, congratulations to the three, uh, three members of the police department who were promoted. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Marcy?
I'll just say, um, ditto to thinking what those guys said.
Congratulations to, uh, our officers tonight, sergeants and lieutenants. Feels good, chief? Squaring everything away?
It does.
Good.
Done with this for a while now?
Hopefully.
All its budgets. Uh, good, awesome. Uh, motion to adjourn, anyone?
Second. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Good night.